Let me just start by, you know, indicating that this is a Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, December 9th at 7:04 PM. And in anticipation of the extension of the executive order 2020-17, the planning board will be holding a virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have been given the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting. If you have an issue during the meeting, either try and get one of our attention or contact Joanna at 679-9597. And there we have the opening statement. Let me go around and introduce the board or have the board introduce themselves via roll call. And since we do not have one of the planning board members, Sue Mooney, I'd like to seat Mr. Davies for Sue.
All right.
So you're in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, all right. So let me just, yeah, I'll go around the word room. I'm Dirk Roden Heiss, Chairman. And then indicate if you're present, so Ed Veal.
Present.
Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Gary Anderson.
Here.
Tyler Eaton.
Here.
And Robert Davies.
Here.
And I just want to make sure that Joanna can hear and communicate. If you can just indicate yes.
Yes.
And Steph, are you available and can hear us and communicate?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. So we have some things on our agenda tonight that we're going to be going through. There's a couple of public hearings. And then we are going to go through some of the zoning changes that we are recommending for the ballot, the Warren article. So first off would be final submittal or final approval of case 19008-SUB and SIT. This is an application for newest developers for a proposed four lot subdivision in addition to concurrent site plan review for 12 units each. The property is located at Route 4, Old Turnpike Road, Nottingham, identified as tax map six, Lot 22. This was heard before the board and approved before this board conditionally. And there were some conditions that it appears that now have been met or majority have been met. And I just want to confirm with the applicant and Steph and Joanna that we do in fact have all of those and we can approve that finally for them.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering. We had submitted a final package week and a half ago, maybe two weeks ago now. And then as of this afternoon, there were a couple of small things that your planning staff asked us to submit to them. And I think those are all in order at this point. So unless the board wants me to go through each condition and how it's addressed, I'll just be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
I'd leave that up to the board if they want to go through each condition. But we do have all of the items that we've asked for, for that conditional approval. Okay, hearing, hearing none?
Sorry, that's Mr. Veal. The, so one of those conditions, the bond authority, surety. So I know we have the estimate for that now. So as part of this, from this point on, our role is done and then it goes on to the select board for final approval, is that correct?
My understanding of your regulations is that at this point, if we wish to start construction, which we do, you would then hire CMA as your engineering consultants. They would review the bond estimate provided. And then per your regulations, that can either be posted in cash or letter of credit or some other means and methods spelled out in your regs. So I think it's still a process that goes through the board, but it's probably financially, it's administered by the board of selection. I do want to point out, this is not a public road. So it is a little different than a standard subdivision process that you undertake during construction.
But in just, from my understanding too, they are classified as roads, but it's the intent in, I believe, the language that's been provided so far in the documents and everything is that these will remain as private roads, private access, correct?
That's 100% correct, yes.
Right. But the, okay. But for like 911 purposes, everything else, they're technically considered roads, not driveways, is that correct?
If anybody wants to, I guess, comment on that, like you said, we do have all of that information in. If somebody wants to entertain a motion to approve the final.
Mr. Chairman, I would, this is Gary Anderson. I would move to approve case number 19-008-SUB-SIT with conditions.
Well, the, let me just clarify. So the conditions are, have now been met. So we did provide a conditional approval. Now it is full approval now that the conditions have been met.
Okay, so scratch with conditions.
Okay. All right, is there a second on the motion that final approval be provided, given the conditions are, have been met?
I'll second it, this is Buzz.
Thank you Buzz. So I'll take a roll call for voting. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yep.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So it's unanimous. Appreciate it. And Mr. Berry, if you just, you know, keep us and keep the planning department informed of construction start and schedules.
Can do. Just one follow-up question. Does the entire board sign the plan or just you, Mr. Chairman?
We usually have the board sign the plan. We're in a little, obviously, different scenario than normal. And I guess I'd have to turn to Steph or to Joanna to see if only one signature, chairman's signature would be needed. What have we been doing and can I sign it and make it official? Or should we have everybody sign that?
I don't see anything in our roles and regulations putting a stipulation on that.
Okay.
It would definitely be easier if we just had one signature. But I don't know. Steph, do you have anything to say to that?
Um, I can look into it, but considering that we have been having everybody sign it, I would say let's defer to that until I can get back, if I get back with a different answer, then I can handle it that way. But consistency, I think, is.
Wouldn't it be in our bylaws?
It's possible, I just don't have them available. But in any regard, Mr. Berry, we will be, we will get these done as quick as possible. If we, you know, we have done the board signing everything in the past. If it can just be the chairman and be a little bit faster, then we'll do that and let you know. But we've also been able to get members to sign it within a day or two. So we usually just have a copy at the planner's office and then people just stop in and we'll sign it.
Great.
Well, thank you for everybody's consideration on this.
Yep.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is case 20009-SUB. This is an application from Maryland and Jeffrey Cole requesting to subdivide 31.18 acres into six lots, two commercial lots on Route 4, one residential lot on Smoke Street and three residential lots on Canard. The property has frontage on Route 4, Smoke Street and Canard. Nottingham is identified as tax map six, Lot 16. Steph, could you just brief us on the application itself? Did you go through a review or should we kind of step into the potential zoning issue?
Yeah, I didn't do a full review because that zoning issue came up and I didn't want to get into the merits of the case before diving into the acceptance.
Sure.
You guys wanted to get into that, I think.
Yeah, so in review of this, once it was, application came in, this is a single lot which is fronted on Route 4 within the commercial industrial district. And almost the entire parcel, if not all the entire parcel, is within the commercial and industrial, which the town of Nottingham passed a regulation just this past year that does not allow residential within that commercial industrial zone. So the application as submitted would need to obtain a variance from the zoning board in order to allow residential use within the zoning and industrial. So prior to us reviewing it, then we would need to have the zoning review done or a zoning variance to move forward with reviewing the application. Although the application may be complete per the checklist and, you know, we could conditionally accept it because in my conversations with staff is that, you know, it has the majority of the components that a subdivision application should have. But barring that there are some zoning issues there that it can't be approved as is through the planning board, then that's what we would defer the applicant to the zoning board.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. So just a point of clarification, I don't think we can conditionally accept the application. I think we have to act on the application either that it's complete or incomplete. But I don't know if we're trying to give the applicant a chance at this point to kind of know where things stand so they have an option to request either a continuance at this point before we move forward or to, or to retract the application to be able to, you know, review it and see what they want to do before moving forward.
Yeah, sorry, I did misuse the word continuance. I did not mean conditional approval or conditional acceptance. I meant that we could, in this acceptance, because this is the acceptance period, we could continue that acceptance since it's already been applied. But we would not be able to move to accept the application until we had zoning variance. So Mr. Veal is correct that either the application be withdrawn and zoning variance obtained and then resubmitted or the applicant can move forward with this application. But the only thing the planning board could do tonight would be to continue it. I guess we'll leave that up to the applicant of what their preference is.
Yeah, this is Scott Franco, it's from New Hampshire Land Consultants representing the Coles. They're also on the, on the call too, they're the phone that's called in. And they can, they can chime in if they like, but I would like to continue it and not pull the application and resubmit. I would like to, if possible, give a brief overview of the project tonight and continue it. And then we'll go to the zoning board. As we were unaware, we had to go to the zoning board as Steph probably has spoken with you, Chair, about when we submitted, we weren't aware that we had to go to the zoning board, obviously.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, after the review, we did indicate that in a conceptual, there was some discussions about whether residential use could be done on some of the parcels along Canard, which they could be if it is outside the 1,000-foot zone line for Route 4. But after the application came in and we were able to determine that that lot is almost entirely within the commercial industrial zone. So without that full knowledge, we didn't, weren't able to guide you prior to the meeting.
Yeah, just, just so we're clear, when we went in, the discussion was whether it had frontage or not on Route 4. And that was the determining factor of whether it was going to be considered residential or commercial. And where these lots, the four of the lots that we created didn't have frontage on it. And that's why we thought, when we submitted, that those could be residential. And that's, and we understand that it's different and we'll go.
Yeah, well, it's, it's one parcel. So it's the parent parcel that zoned. Yeah, you can't rezone it by just subdividing it.
Right, and we understand that now.
Okay. Since you, since you are here and we certainly have this on our agenda, if you would, would want to go through your proposal, you know, a brief overview. And that will help maybe the board get an understanding of what the desire of this application is. That would be helpful.
If I could share my screen? If everybody can see that?
Yep, I can.
So this is the existing conditions plan. Now, the light blue is the perimeter of the property. Route 4 is to the top of the plan. Smoke Street is to the right of the plan and Canard is along the entire bottom of the plan. The property is approximately 30.5 acres with 1,300 feet of frontage on Route 4, 850 feet of frontage on Smoke Street and about 1,850 feet on Canard Road. We show wetlands throughout. Damon Burke of Fraggle Rock Environmental did the wetland delineation. New Hampshire Land Consultants did the rest of the work. There is a power line, as everybody probably knows, that goes right through the property and crosses Route 4 and continues into Barrington. That's a 285-foot wide easement. And what we're proposing on this sheet, the blue, of course, is the perimeter of the property, are six lots, two along Route 4, one along Smoke Street and three along Canard Road. Lot 16, we'll call it for starting on the, at the 12 o'clock position, I guess, or 9 o'clock. That is 4.7 acres and that's 214 feet of frontage. The next one to the right where the hand is on the, on the plan is six, over six acres and has 1,100 feet of frontage on Route 4. Then you come around down Smoke Street and all the frontage on this one is on Smoke Street and Canard Road. All the frontage on these two are along Route 4. This lot is 16-2, has 258 feet of frontage on Canard and 848 along Smoke Street for a total of about 1,100 feet of frontage with over five acres, five and a half acres of area. Then you come around Canard Road and we've proposed three lots. Lot 16-3 has 467 feet of frontage and three acres. The next lot, 16-4, has 371 feet of frontage and over 6.4 acres. And then the last lot is 6.5, has 750 feet of frontage on Canard and 4.8 acres. We are asking for one waiver with the application for driveway slope for lots 16-3 and 16-4 to be a maximum of a 10% slope, where the regulations allow for an 8% slope. And that's the whole application.
This is Buzz, can I get a point of clarification? Are all four of the residential lots within the commercial district?
The entire, I think there's maybe one little area where the hand is right now that's more than 1,000 feet, but 1,000 feet pretty much comes over to Canard Road and encompasses the entire piece of property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any comments from the board or question?
No, before we get into too many questions on, Mr. Chairman, do we need to act on the application before we can really get into details of the parcel or of the plan?
Yeah, I was just meaning questions about acceptance, but.
Okay, sorry.
That, I mean, I can turn to Steph maybe. I know you did do some review of this, maybe not in a formal sense, but if we were to act on this to accept it but continue it, could you give the board a, an understanding if the majority of the materials meets that?
Yes, so in my preliminary review, it does meet the acceptance requirements. It is possible to have a, excuse me, a concurrent ZBA application and planning board application in there. But aside from that variance, everything else is, is good.
So I guess we wouldn't be able to accept the application. We would only be able to continue it, if that's my understanding. Ed, was that yours as well?
No, I think we can accept the application, but we wouldn't be able to make any kind of approvals until ZBA relief was, was achieved, is my understanding.
Okay.
Because I think if we have accepted the, the, the application checklist, then, then we can take, basically take ownership of it by accepting it as complete or, or incomplete. If it's complete, then once we make that motion, my understanding is, then we would be able to kind of have a little bit more discussion on it and then guide them to the ZBA.
But yeah, yeah. The concern is, is that, you know, if we do accept it, then we're now on the clock.
Right.
And, you know, we don't have control of the ZBA's schedules.
So the advantage to the applicant is for us to continue, not to accept tonight.
Go ahead, I know the applicant's got a.
Yeah, I would say that if we can, we would like to get it accepted because if it comes down to it, we're gonna, and the Coles can speak up if they like. But if it comes down to the 65-day clock running out, they're not going to not allow for an extension of that. I can, and so if we accept it tonight, we can at least get some input more. It's sounding like there's some, some other comments or something that'd like to be shared on the plan. And if we can get those tonight while we're going through the ZBA, we can address those as well along, along the way, instead of waiting. And because as I understand it, the ZBA meeting wouldn't be until January 19th, I think is what Joanna sent me.
Yep, okay.
It's quite a bit of time away. And if there's, there's something we can address in the meantime, then we'd like to do that, if possible.
Yeah, I mean, I'll put it to the board if somebody would like to make a motion to accept it. I mean, I do feel like there's, you know, with Steph's review and, and, you know, I've gone through the plans themselves, they're, they're, you know, fairly detailed, but a lot of information's there. Then, you know, a motion can be made.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, it's Mr. Veal, I'll move that we accept the application for case 20-009-SUB as complete.
I'll second that.
Who is that second?
Gary.
Okay. Motion by Ed, second by Gary. Great, thank you all. Any other discussion on that motion from the board? Then we'll just do a roll call. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
And Robert Davies?
Yes.
And Chairman says yes too. Okay, so the, the application has been accepted. I'm not sure if people have been able to, at least board members have been able to look at this application much, but there is some information that might generate some, some questions. So I guess I'd open it up to the board then, if there's some specific things that might help guide the applicant here.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal, I can jump in with some of my initial, initial notes as I was reviewing it. So yes, in my opinion, since, since the current lot falls within that commercial industrial zone with the fault, almost a thousand feet, that's the variance to be required in that, you know, that goes back to the master plan, indicating that, that Route 4 parcel should be for commercial industrial use only. And then was supported by a town vote for removing residential as a, as a use entirely from that zone for any parcel that falls within that zone. There would be some other probably variances that would be needed as, for this particular layout, based on the, if there's a wetlands impact for a proposed lot 16, if a driveway was to go through the buildable area. And then there'd be probably some additional studies that would be needed, like from subdivision regulations, Article 10, if critical areas, including steep slopes, are disturbed. And I believe a, a site plan would, should also be filed for this. And we have the option for concurrent site plan, but I don't believe that was how this was decided to move forward. But can they amend it to make it a concurrent review if, if, if that is required? And then, sorry, I'm just going to go through a couple, couple more. And then the way proposed lots, the way the hand is now on the screen, I can't read what, I can't remember what lot number that is. Ah, you moved it.
Which one?
16-4, I think is what you're talking about, Ed.
That one. So those two lots right there at the bottom that currently are shown on, are proposed for, off of Canard Road, or Canard Road. If possible, if those were to exist, I would prefer to see that lot line moved over and have them have a shared driveway. So otherwise, you're going to have to go through the steep slopes and we'd prefer not to impact those if another design is possible. And also the well radius is shown in an odd spot. You have the 25% slopes in the well would be sitting at the bottom of that slope. So you'd have to be pumping up in elevation to get the water from where it's proposed up to the house. And I imagine you'd have to disturb that slope to do so. And then obviously Route 4 driveway access is, is regulated by the state, final permit by the state. But that intersection with Smoke Street is, is pretty, pretty high volume in this area. And I know there's been some pretty good accidents in that section. So I wouldn't be in favor of seeing two driveways, two curb cuts occurring in that area. So I don't know if, I'd prefer to see like a shared driveway somehow between those two commercial lots that are proposed.
Okay, thanks.
Kind of a lot of things here, but sorry, I just tried to give them all at once for you.
I just get some clarification on one of the comments?
Yep.
On the site plan, what would a site plan be for a residential lot?
It'd be for the commercial lots.
Which would come in at another point, once those, those lots would just be approved as, as lots. And then if they sold them, then a site plan would be submitted for review. So we're not proposing any building on those lots right now.
Yeah, I agree. I think in that case, it would just be the subdivision if you're not going to do the commercial lots with uses and buildings. I do wanna make sure that the applicant and the owners are, are aware that, I mean, the, the town just approved this zone change last year from allowing residential within that commercial industrial district. So the, the town has recently done that as of last year. And the, the reason for that is this is the only commercial land within the town of Nottingham that is really applicable for commercial land. It's zoned for that. And we had seen over the course of the past 10 years of a lot of residential uses going into these commercial zones to the point where that would never come back into a commercial application. So if the town of Nottingham wanted to have commercial use, this would be the place for it. So please bear that in mind.
And a point of clarification too, the, the reason I was wondering if a site plan was required at this point is in our zoning regs, Article 2E 2, under requirements for, sorry. Sorry, my new computer, it's scrolling. E is the commercial zone permitted uses is one, and two is requirements in, under D, 2D is a site plan review required. So that's why I was wondering if it's required at this stage. Because zoning ordinance does apply versus waiting until, till there's actually a plan for what it's gonna, what they're being proposed for. I don't know if Steph can answer that or not, or?
I, I would think.
Sorry, go ahead, Dirk.
I was just, I was just gonna give my opinion again. I, I don't think one would be necessary or needed. And, and if they do not have a, a use, then they don't know what the building footprint is. They don't know, you know, what the access potentially could be, or the, the need, or, or the use, or. So if they did, if we, if a site plan was done without any of that knowledge, it would just be a generic one which would just force them to come back and do a new site plan. So. Steph, you'd be happy to hear your opinion as well.
I was just reviewing 67443, the RSA, and then looking at our site plan regulations. And I, I, I think you're right on that one. They, they won't need a, a site plan review until something changes with the actual land.
Okay. Other board members with concerns, questions of the applicant?
Just a point of, I guess, clarification on the driveways on Route 4. I know Ed mentioned something about a, a shared driveway, and I understand that reasoning. But am I wrong in thinking that DOT really dictates what happens there?
No, you're right. Yeah, we can only make requests for driveway locations. The state of New Hampshire DOT will provide final approval and permit.
Right, but we're, we are allowed to have input in that process. We are allowed to. This is what, you know, the, the view of the board is of the town.
Yep. Yeah, we've done that before.
Sure.
Ian, you're usually good for a couple of questions.
Ed touched upon a couple of mine. He beat me to it on Lot 16 with the wetland crossing that that lot would require. Currently, based on this application, it requires a variance for that crossing at any point for any development on that lot. It's the first thing I noticed on that. And then I kinda, I've been focusing on lots 16-3 and 16-4. These are the two lots that you're also asking for a waiver on. I was looking at it too, just based on length and elevations to make sure that we weren't gonna be getting approaching the 30,000 square foot disturbance mark requiring stormwater. The only comment I have on those is, you know, whether it's eight or 10%, just due to the length of those driveways, I'd wanna see possibly some provisions on the plan for culverts. I know it's, you know, just a subdivision plan, but if it was approved as is, I'd be worried that we'd have quite a bit of water coming down on to Kennard. Just a consideration, just due to the steep, steep driveway. I just wanna make sure it's a consideration for whoever develops these in the future.
Yep.
And then, yeah, my only thought with two was, as I'd said, the, the well on 16-4, I understand that, I think it was placed there. I mean, it was, it was a spot that the well could fit without any sort of easements or setbacks needed. But the fact that it's separated by a steep slope area, I think isn't ideal. So that's really all I got right now.
Any other board member with some questions or? Okay. I'll put, put it back to the applicant if they have any questions of us or, you know, would, would like any clarification of anything we've got.
No, I think everything that we got, we got some good comments. Obviously that well was, should have been put on the upside of that slope. We'll fix that. I would just ask that, would this be in a, a notice meeting if we could open it up to the public for any comments? That would be useful for us as well. If there is any public comments.
Yep. Sure. Let me go ahead and, and I guess open the public meeting. So if there are some questions from the public, you know, to, for, or against this application, please either raise your hand, and I can't remember if we gave them the instructions to do that, but if you could just indicate. Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any Steph or Joanna. Do you see any public with some comments? I, I guess we don't see any. Guess there aren't any tonight. Well, we'll keep the public hearing open through this process. So we will, as, as this evolves a little bit and it, it, there's some resolution with the, the zoning board, we'll, we'll bring it back and have the public informed again. So I, I, we're gonna have to continue the application itself, the review. So now that it's been accepted, would have to have a continuance. And you said the zoning board was the January 18th or 19th? So we would have to do it after that. I don't have my meeting calendar up. Joanna, do you have that? What a, what meeting after the zoning board meeting?
Okay, so the next meeting, so the application deadline for the, okay, so January 19th, and then you will, you could meet before the planning board on the 27th or the, or February 10th or 24th.
Did you say January 22nd or 27th?
27th.
We'll, we'll have gone through the zoning board hopefully and get a determination by then, so. If we could do that one.
Yep.
Yeah, so you'd like to go on the January 27th?
Yes, please.
Okay, I, we, I don't have any.
Does that give the, the board enough time to, so we're not, we wouldn't, we're not expecting new plans at that point or anything? So just wanna make sure we have enough time to, if anything comes in after ZBA, that we have time to review it before the next meeting. So as long as everybody's okay with that date, including the applicant, you know, I'd be fine with, with getting it on earlier for them than, than later.
Yep.
Yeah, and if there's major changes, then, then we'll ask for a continuance or something like that.
Okay.
Which I don't foresee, but.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion for continuing this application until January 27th?
So Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Veal. I move that we continue case 20-009-SUB to January 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. With, with any new deliverables to us by the Friday before.
Okay. Motion on, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Ian? Great. Any discussion on the motion? A roll call.
Can I please have discussion?
Yes.
Sorry, but I don't work on Fridays. So if we got deliverables on Friday, you won't get them till Monday.
The Thursday before. I, I'm in my motion to make it the, the Thursday before. I just wanna make sure they had time between the 19th, so.
Understood, yeah.
The, uh, so sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the calendar to get the dates correct, so we don't run into that problem. All right, the 19th is a Tuesday. All right, so Mr. Chairman, I'm in my motion for, with any new deliverable to, to be delivered to the planning board by, by noon on January 21st, 2021.
Okay.
I will still second that.
All right. We good on discussion? Okay. A roll, roll call. Ed Veil?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Uh, Robert Davies?
Yes.
Did I skip Tyler?
Nope.
No, okay. All right, and Chairman's yes on that. So thank you very much. And we'll look forward to what the next step would be.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, let's step into our proposed zoning changes. And this is a, a public hearing for those zoning changes. And let's see. If someone can grab the screen back. Wonder if, there we go, thank you. Okay, so the zoning changes, so to adopt a new overlay district to protect Nottingham streams that are not subject to the Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act and associated definitions to the definition section, and amend Article 3, Section B, the wetland conservation area to create a conditional use permit, create 25-foot no disturb buffer, vegetative buffer around bernal pools, and add a critical wetlands definition to the definition section. I'm gonna elect Ian to just maybe say a couple of words about the, um, the wetland conservation area. Isn't that where we're doing the, sorry, sorry, I'm losing my track of mind here.
Do we wanna touch upon that first before the stream or keep it in order?
Well, Sue was gonna talk about the proposed stream, but she's not here. I don't know if anybody's more up to talking about that one in specifics. Give it a shot, Ian, or Ed, please help me out.
I'll take a shot at both. I mean, I kinda followed the stream one, but.
All right. So the, yeah, this, just for information for public viewers that might see this afterwards, ju- just to give them some information about these zoning changes themselves. You know, other than just the quick description. I mean, we, we've gone through a number of meetings and process and feedback from other boards and, and departments within the town and, and have found that there are a couple of things that we really just want to address in the, in the zoning ordinance. And in order to do that, we, we go through this process of recommending amendments to it. So as I mentioned, one was the shoreline water quality protection with the other ones of the wetlands conservation area.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to speak, this is Mr. Veal. I'm happy to, to try to take the heavy lifting on the, well, not the heavy lifting, because it's already done, but the, talk over the, the stream protection overlay district. And if Mr. McKinnon wants to handle the review on the, the update.
Yeah, that would appreciate it.
Play into the well, yep.
Want me to go first?
It's first on the agenda, sure.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, so the basic quick overview was, you know, we started planning on this quite a while ago. We have our, longer overview is we got our, our master plan done. We update it periodically. We have assignments kind of from the master plan for each board to work on. One of the items for our board was protections of lower order streams and the, the areas and that. We kinda tasked that over to the Conservation Commission to help us draft the language for it, which they did. We've sent amended to fit within our zoning. So this is to protect those areas that kind of fall outside the shoreline water quality protection area, which is regulated by DES. But are also still, still highly valuable to the town in our water quality. Our water quality is a, was high on, on our list of, of action items. We have well water and, and things of that nature, so. So yeah, so this adds some language to that to protect, basically create buffers and notice our barriers around first order, second order, third order streams where the fourth order and higher tend to fall under the state jurisdiction. And if they don't, then this also has protections for them as well.
Great. Anyway, other members wanna add to that if, before we move on to the wetland? Okay, Ian?
I guess my, my only thing before I jump into the wetlands is that I think that, that this stream protection is pretty common in quite a few towns. It's becoming more and more popular with towns with water resources that are worth protecting. Especially where we have quite the variety of water resources. If nobody has anything else, I can jump into welling.
Yep, please.
Okay. So the, we're, we're proposing to amend Article 3, Section B, which is the wetland conservation areas. One of the primary amendments that we are proposing is the creation of a conditional use permit. This was partially driven by, it's a lot of discussion that actually began earlier this year based on some applications where the board reviewed the existing language under the article, specifically under the permitted use article, where based on the language, no alteration within wetlands is permitted without a variance. This conditional use permit would allow the construction of certain elements to read directly from the conditional use. It would allow certain things like the construction of roads, accessways, essentially driveways, and then different forms of utility construction through wetlands. This is, we've determined this is fairly important because this affects, this regulation affects whether it's new applications for subdivision, commercial applications, or even single existing lots with somebody looking to build a house and build the driveway. So it affects all levels of applications. And the conditional use permit is something that many of our surrounding towns utilize because it still provides, it kind of ensures that the board Ha, is able to have that last say in protection of our wetlands. Through all levels of permitting. And then we also added the twenty five foot no disturb vegetated buffer specifically around vernal pools. Vernal pools are a component found within wetlands in the state that the state Department of Environmental Services has. For many years been pushing for more protection of vernal pools, there's no state legislation specifically requiring protection of vernal pools. But they're key to many ecosystems throughout the state. And so the twenty five foot buffer is another common buffer provided by regulation throughout the state. And then just some minor definition edits. But we feel that this, uh, would bring our regulation. More in line with surrounding towns, and also assist, I think, the board with future applications.
Yeah, I just, thanks Ian, and I just, I want to just make it clear that the, the state still retains the. The need and has the jurisdiction to permit anything within wetlands. This. Amendment here would just allow the board or local. Review knowledge of what's going on within that wetland, so it is not superseding the, the state. But it is better protecting the local, our town.
Well, sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal, point of clarification, that's actually, I believe, in this case, we are allowed to have stricter standards than the state, so. So we, we may be stricter, and they may go get, an application that falls within this may have the state approval for a dredge and fill, but not meet our requirements of the town. Your floor would have to go for variance and then do that process. If I'm.
But yeah, that's what I was trying to say, yeah, yeah, may not have said it that way.
I don't know if we need to specify that, you know, the reason for the conditional use is that if we have an application that has a design for a driveway or road. In conjunction with our engineering review of the plans, the board can provide comment on that wetland crossing, which, like Ed said, maybe we look into something that's. Stricter than what the state would approve. But it's basically the review is now in conjunction with maybe an active application where if it was a maintained as a variance. Or special exception, that falls to the zoning board, there's a possibility of some disconnect between a concurrent application.
Yeah, and that, that's what we're finding exactly, is that, you know, our regulations state that a variance has to be. Obtained from the zoning board. For, say, a subdivision application that's before the planning board. So this helps, you know, streamline that process and, and keep it consistent within the planning board. Yep.
Yep, exactly.
So would another way to say that also be that the planning board would, would be able to. Sub, well, se. Come up with a reasoning to suggest a conditional use permit or not? Is that pretty much what, another way of saying what you guys both just said?
I mean, I guess essentially what we're saying is that any impact to a wetland, the way it's been written, if you're proposing any impact to a well of any kind. It will require a conditional use permit.
Or variance.
Yeah, or variance, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, we're, yeah, we're adding in that language of the conditional use to try to, for the, for certain applications that are fitting to, to have the minor impacts and such, that fit those certain criteria to avoid the. The unnecessary trip to ZBA. But the rest would, would go to ZBA, still.
And I think it's important too, to, you know, in reference to, say, a single family lot that exists today, that somebody wants to build the driveway. Through, through an established wetland, according to our existing regulation, that driveway does require. A. Variance, and maybe, you know, I think in the past, you know, there's, you know, this is obviously, we found this interpretation relatively. You know, in spring, is that. You know, that driveway would require in many towns just a state permit, but by the conditional use, I think this is. It, it's easier for development of single family lots. Because a variance has some different legal. Requirements to it, that maybe don't fall in line with the development of a single family lot. Or small level of development, so.
Yeah, well, thank you, let me, let me just open it up to the public, because it's a public hearing for, for these. Changes here, so these are changes that the board has recommended move forward, and this is the opportunity for the. Public to ask questions or talk or provide opinion, so open it up to the board, I mean, open it up to. The public. Not hearing any. Uh, let me give it one more try, any public that would like to make comment? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. And. Then we'll. Entertain, I guess, a, a formal vote to move these to the warrant articles, Steph, is that correct?
Um, we can send it to ballot right now, you can also send it to a second hearing. Give anyone else an opportunity to weigh in.
And the second hearing would be when? When would we do that?
Next meeting.
So is there?
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, is there enough time between, if we held another. Meeting, a public meeting, there's enough time to get it then to the ballot?
When is our first meeting in January?
The thirteenth?
Yeah.
The thirteenth, I'm just double checking the, the schedule, I believe there is, but I just wanted to double check.
I'm looking at just the list, I think, that was generated that came in our packets that Joanna sent, it said, January twenty fifth is the last day to hold final hearing. So then the thirteenth would form, would fall in that, yep.
Okay, well, and then my recommendation is just to keep the public hearing open. You know, if we have time, we may as well give public time if they, if they listen to this meeting, and now that they're, they might have some questions, they can come to the next meeting and. Provide input.
Yep.
Okay.
And Steph, I had just one extremely minor edit, where on the, uh, stream protection district, overlay district, there's one spot where it said exceeded it, exceeded, exceeded it. It's in the minimum buffer area.
It's extra exceeding.
Yeah, that's simply exceeded. Finding it.
Where is it again, Ed?
It is under five administration. The second. Bullet pointer dash. The stream buffer width for third order and higher streams does not exceed it an absolute minimum of fifty feet. Just grammar, so it's just totally minor change. And then to have, to hold a second public hearing, do we need to, to make a motion to make that formal that we are gonna hold it on the thirteenth, or is it just continued?
Well, since it's called.
Are you gonna continue, or, sorry, go ahead, Ed?
Since it's called a second public meeting? Should we? Vote that we could bring it to a second one, or I guess that's what you're asking, Ed, right?
Yeah, I mean.
I think, I think if we just continue it, why don't we just? Vote to continue this. Public hearing. And we'll go to the second one.
By continuing it, that means it doesn't need to be renoticed, correct?
Right, is that the double check, we have to renotice the, the second public hearing for zoning changes or not?
I think if it was a second public hearing, then that would mean that there was some substantial changes.
Oh, but we're, we're saying this is still, it's actually still the first public hearing, that we're just continuing it?
That's my understanding.
So we'll just continue it and then call it the second one when we get there. Right?
Works for me.
Steph, Steph, you have a quizzical look on your face, you're not with me on that one?
It's the second half of the first hearing.
So continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing. So moved?
So moved.
Can I get a second on the so moved?
I'll second.
All right, so my motion is. Second. Let me roll call that, Ed?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And Buzz?
No, because I think it ought to be, uh, noticed again, but that's just my personal opinion.
You should have said something in between the second. I'm sorry, okay, no.
Could always have Tyler mention that, I don't know when the next selectman's meeting is, but.
I, I do agree with Buzz, I mean, if we don't have any public here, you know, it would be good to get a, some more word out. So maybe we can just do a little extra posting on the website, and, I mean, how are we, how are we noticing it now?
We have select board Monday night, it'll happen Monday until.
Okay.
Yeah, and we should have Tyler keep mentioning the, the board updates.
Yep. Okay. All right. Let's move on in the public meeting, we do have one item here that we. Was brought before the planning department. And. That was relative to the poor farm road that we recently, poor farm road. Subdivision that we recently approved, the applicant came back and requested a driveway change of location. If you do remember, there was. Driveway that was a common driveway originally in the. Original application, and then during discussions at the board. Because of its location, there was, the applicant thought it might be better if they were separated. For. Market purposes and not having a, the hindrance of having a combined. Driveway, and so we did approve it with two separate driveways, and the applicant, or the owners now would like to change that back to a, a shared driveway. And so the process, we were a little, not unsure about that, but it, it sounds like the process would be that they have to. Uh, amend the current approved subdivision plan to show those, the driveway as such. We do have a, a, a letter from Public Works Director saying that he's reviewed the driveway locations out on site and. Is accepting, acceptable of that, and has requested a little bit of. Brush clearing on the east side of one of those, just to make sure that the site vision is, site visibility is, is okay. So that, that's sort of the status of what that is. So I think the next thing would be, Steph and Joanna, would be that the applicant submits that revised subdivision plan. With those driveways on them for our approval. Is that how this shook out?
Did they have to do a full? Subdivision plan, or can it be a, a written amendment?
I, I thought it could be a written amendment, but I guess we were unclear, I, I wasn't fully clear on the conversation that we were having, whether.
I think it can be a written amendment, but I, I believe it does have to go to hearing.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be the full plan, but just a written amendment, and then it would come before the board? Is that right?
Believe so, yep.
Okay.
So how, how does the. Plan that's been. Accepted by the county, how does that get amended?
They'll have to record the. Revision, so.
As revision as a deed?
Yes. Yes, so it would be a, you know, written up in the deed of the land. And there is easement language for that shared driveway that would be, you know, in that same deed of who takes care of what. So I just want to let people be aware of that.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Uh, if we're requiring a public hearing on this, is that fully noticed, it butters to everybody?
Sorry, I didn't hear that all.
If we're requiring a public hearing, does that mean I have to notice everybody, and therefore the fees charged to the applicant?
I'm not sure that it requires a public he, he, hearing or public notice, I mean, the plan's been approved. You know, it's, it's for a, a minor driveway revision. I wouldn't believe it has to be a public hearing. We could just hear it at a meeting that. That the board members would review it and. Either approve or recommend some change to it. It's my opinion.
It comes down to whether it's considered a substantive change or a. Trying to remember the terminology, I see a hand, thanks, Steph.
It's, it's a very minor change to, to it, I mean, we, we originally approved it as a. As a, not approved it, but we originally had it as a combined driveway, shared driveway. And at the request of the applicant to split those and have them as single driveways, two single driveways, the, the board approved that. And so they're reverting back to basically what the planning board had agreed to at the beginning, so it's very minor.
I do just want to mention this is a scenic road. I don't know if there's extra driveway criteria, I'm checking on that right now.
I have one comment though, based on what I'm reviewing, Joanna uploaded. I'm looking at the plan where it looks like in, they've drawn. The anticipated layout and the documents that they sent. They've got in like a purple color, they have the common driveway shown, you know, relatively close to the shared property line and the split. They have a preferred driveway location to.
It's the purple, yeah, it's the purple, not the preferred, the preferred one was, was, was away from the property line. But it lined up, it lined up opposite of a power pole, so they wanted to take advantage of not having to put another power pole. And have that in line. But they, it, it would not be that alignment that we would be looking at, it would be the one that's closest to the property line.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that also would go against their agreement for the common driveway anyway, because it would be outside of their limits, so that was my only thought.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that diagram was a little misleading.
I, I get why they want it there, they don't want to put more poles than they have to, but.
Those are common driveways, it's supposed to be kept to the common boundary by the zoning, and they had to go to zoning before, when they wanted to deviate from that. So I could see on this being a scenic road, there's a rock wall right at the boundary, so I could see why they might want to.
Yeah.
Not a little bit, you know, I don't know how far, this is obviously just a pencil sketch, so that might not actually be the scale, and. Like on boundary.
Right, right, yeah, I'd, I'd obviously rather not disturb the rock wall, but. On a scenic road. And, and like I said, the Public Works Director has at least reviewed it out on site and is. And, and like I said, the Public Works Director has at least reviewed it out on site and his communication with the builder themselves.
I see he mentioned, Sean mentioned he's okay with it as long as they improve the eastly side of the driveway. Is that because this common drive location, is this right at the top of that little steep rise?
Yep.
Yeah, I remember that. So I definitely agree with that.
Yep.
And remember it's quite narrow there. Well, the whole road is narrow, but.
Yep. Okay, so to, I guess, circle back on directions, we are going to receive an amendment, amended sketch or some amendment language from the applicant. It'll come before the board. And as a minor revision, and that will be recorded along with the deed for the two properties.
So the language you've already received isn't sufficient?
Sorry, Joanna, I have a hard time hearing you.
The language you've already received is not sufficient?
Yes. Yep. They've provided driveway, common driveway language to us and, I mean, we can distribute it throughout the board if we need to.
Okay, so do we just need to have it as a public hearing and that's the holdup?
No, I didn't think we did need to have this as a public hearing.
Okay, so what do I need to get from the applicant? Because he's already submitted that language and I posted it.
Oh, well, I guess we'd have to just certainly define it out of that sketch. So they're
Well, I think with, Joanna, are you getting at that they've already submitted that driveway agreement that establishes the 50 foot, like the limits of the common drive and?
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So they, yeah, they've drafted, I mean, it's called amended revised driveway agreement. And they established that 50 250 foot by 50 foot easement on each person's property in benefit of the other.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't, I missed that one.
Yeah, it's the.
Okay, so we have it. So I guess we could do this now. I mean.
Yeah, if we don't need to send it to a public hearing, I'd be in favor. I read it and it seems, everything seems to check out.
The only thing that bothers me about it is that the registered plan shows two separate driveways. If, if we left that intact, does the building inspector, the, the, does the building inspector have the authority to change the position of the driveways when a building permit is issued?
Buzz, are you referring to the, are you referring to the recorded subdivision plans themselves?
Correct.
I'm just looking, Joanna uploaded those and it actually looks like they didn't, the driveway locations are not on the recorded subdivision plans.
Really?
Yeah.
That, that shouldn't be the case.
I thought I did see them.
I'm looking at the, at least the ones that Joanna has up on the site that have the recording sheet number on them. Nope, see if I think there's a date on there somewhere, but I don't see any driveways on these plans. Just, just, they just look like standard subdivision plans with setbacks and lot lines.
Go ahead, Steph.
So the plans don't actually need to show final driveways. The requirement is to show that you can get to the lot in an approved manner. The actual locations for the subdivision of land does not require you to have the final driveway on it.
So again, my question is, do we, do we need to do anything or can we leave it to the permitting official in town to agree with the new driveway positions?
Well, let me put it this way. I don't want all driveways to come to the planning board.
But is it because it's a common driveway? Is that?
I guess I'm a little, you know, I'm a little confused and why then are we at, do we always ask for driveway locations on subdivision plans? If they're not bound by that.
I was always under the understanding that either the building inspector or the Public Works Director really had the authority to make sure that those were safe and determine those with the builder or the owner. But I could be wrong. That was my assumption.
No, and I think that's appropriate because they're the most knowledgeable and most aware of what the issues are there, whether it's drainage issues or, you know, I think with the planning board, we just have to make sure they're not in steep slopes and you know, they're, the driveways will allow, you know, or not in wetlands. And that the driveways allow for a general slope that meets the requirements. But I'm, I'm in favor of just having this as the requirement of the of the Public Works Director. I'd rather have that probably in his court than the building inspector. It's more Public Works roadway.
I'm guessing this came up because did they file for a driveway permit? Is that?
Yeah, it used to be the building inspector did that at least going back a few years. But I don't know, may have changed. I'm sure the Board of Selectmen would have that answer.
So Joanna, you were kind of nodding your head. This, this came from, from the building inspector?
Public Works Director. So when when applicants apply for their driveway permit and it's on a town road, Sean goes out and makes sure that it's in a good spot. And when he saw that it was being requested, actually no, this applicant, application came to him because they needed to go from the two to the one because of getting a lot of ledge removal, excavation, whatever, wherever the right word is for that. They are requesting to have it as a shared. Then they wanted to have it a shared, but not on down and the two, that's why you have two proposals on that one plan. So, but yes, all of these, all of the driveway permits go to Sean first.
Okay.
The complicating factor on this one too is this is a scenic road. So regardless of what we do, the, the, before issuance of a driveway permit is given, the CONCON might have to have a review of it because they do have authority under our subdivision regs to have, to be able to give you know, input on that for any, you know, relating to any trees that are going to be removed, stone walls, things of that nature that have to be relocated. So if that, if this one involves any of that, just keep that in mind too, that you know, that could just be a reminder to the building inspector or road agent who are wishing for the driveway permits.
Yep, yep. Okay, I was thinking this at the beginning, this was more of a planning board issue, but it, it sounds like this. You know, I think we're probably in agreement that this should be the Public Works Director, because that's what he's been doing.
Yeah, I think, I think we can kind of chalk this one up to trying to find out some information for the future. I don't want to complicate it. If their, if their plan is to utilize that same initial location that we had gone by for a shared driveway and shared driveways are allowed in our zoning regs, if it meets the requirements of that. You know, I would be fine, basically they're, they would just be abandoning the, the one that's showing on, on the current plan and utilizing a shared driveway instead.
Right. And to Buzz's point, I mean, the, the description that they have is a legal description that will be then filed with the deed of both properties. So while it may not show on the actual subdivision plan, it will be on the deed for the property.
And do we know why they, they want to move it? So on the original plans, the driveway was to the, the one, sorry, I don't know where they're on here, the north side of that rock wall. You know, what they could kind of go beyond it and cross there and stay along the common boundary. Whereas the proposed version is showing it you know, further over, further south onto lot 712.
I don't know the specific reasons. You know, it might be really site related that, you know, that there was a lot of cut or or something that had to happen, or maybe there was a large piece of ledge that they didn't want to blast or move. So they, they switched it by about 20 feet or something. Okay. Well, that's, I guess, a good discussion. So let's, let's leave it at that, that the Public Works Director in his responsibility. So another thing I do want to mention here is that, because we're getting close to the end here. We're on this kind of staff and board updates now. I just have one to let the public know if they are watching this later is that we do have an open seat for the planning board. One of our members had to, well, left town, moved out of town a few months back and we do have an opening for a planning board member. So anybody who is interested in being a member, please contact Joanna and we'll, we'll have more discussion and we can have a one-on-one conversation about what that means to be a planning board member and all the fun we have. I'll, that was my comment for tonight and I'll just go around the room. Gary, do you have anything?
I just, I'll defer to Steph because I, I guess wasn't formally signed up for the the quarterly meeting and I'm hoping Steph was and maybe can fill soon on that.
Sure, Steph, you're next.
Um, yeah, I can give a brief overview. The SRPC quarterly meeting showcased a couple of the current projects that staff are working on, including some economic development projects, some brownfield stuff, as well as some environmental projects that Kyle and Elena are tackling. Some grant funded projects that they're working on with some, some of our towns. And I did a brief overview of the resiliency subcommittee staff or resiliency subcommittee that I've been staffing. That group's been working on tackling, you know, what is, what does resiliency mean in the Stratford region? How can we be better equipped for pandemics, droughts, environmental issues, hazards, as well as, you know, the social issues and infrastructure issues that come along with that. So that was the quick version. I believe it was recorded and will be distributed at a future date.
Thank you, Steph.
Great. Thanks, Steph. Ian, do you have any updates?
Nothing for me.
Ed?
Uh, just quick, Joanna sent out the Stratford Regional Plannings. Oh, boy. Update and it was regarding the the completion of the opening it because I printed it out and then forgot it at work. That's what everybody prints stuff. Yeah. A result of the 2019, 2020 New Hampshire Municipal Land Use Regulation Annual Survey. And there was a couple of pretty interesting things in there that I think, you know, could help guide us a little bit because I know there are items that have come up a few times for us as a community, accessory dwelling units. So over 202 communities, I believe, allow them, but less than half allow them detached from the principal unit. And and 170 of the 202, 169 require that one of the two units be occupied. We and then there was a lot about workforce housing and changes that have been going on in that within different communities and restricting it or tightening up a little bit. Or term rentals. Open space developments. And a couple of other areas that were pretty interesting in that it's just a quick two-page, four-page summary of, of, of that survey, but it kind of gives us an idea of what other communities are doing around us and the state as a whole to see how we, we you know, we align with everybody else.
Good. I haven't looked at that, but I, I will.
Mr. Chairman, I had mentioned ADUs. And I wanted to pipe, pipe in on that. We've built several of those now and we're actually applying for one in, in the city of Dover currently. And it seems every town outside of Nottingham that we we proceed and, you know, to get permits for. They're a little different from another town. So for instance, Dover has a separate application for ADUs which goes through their planning and zoning board. So just thought that, that might be of interest. I found it interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that's kind of up for discussion in this next year here to see what we can do. All right. Thank you. Tyler, do you have any updates?
Uh, yeah, we had a select board started on 11/30/2020. And we got a little ways through it. Just did our, you know, accounts payable, payroll manifest. Chris talked to us a little bit regarding the commercial property in town that we'll look into and sell. And then Gary came on, representing Stratford Regional Planning Board. We talked about recycling. Gave us some very good information. And some of the board members lost power, so we continued on 12/3. And spoke about the 2021 budget. Sean was there to give us an update, a few roads that we have problems on. Berry Road, the bridge, needs some work. Not exactly sure what it is yet, but they're taking care of it, keeping it in shape. And Cooper Hill as well. And then Gary was on for a little bit more. So I was, we're meeting every, every Monday, you know, and until the whatever.
Question for Tyler.
Yeah.
I've been watching back on some of the selectmen's meetings. Are we done? Are you guys done now interviewing the broker? The next stage for the Route 4 property is basically figuring out which brokerage will get it and then they'll just move forward?
Yeah, we're done with that process. And then I just wanted to ask again, at the meeting Monday, what is exactly you want me to say when I give my report to the planning board?
I think it was, I think it was just, we'll have the, how are we wording it? A continuation of our public hearing on the zoning amendments?
Yeah, I think we're just trying to garnish some more publicity on the zoning amendments to see if it's more public that would like to come to the meeting. That's all. Buzz, do you have anything?
Nope, I've said enough tonight.
Um, alright, that's, we have public opportunity for public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to make comment, we'd be happy to hear it. Or we can go right to our minutes if we have minutes to vote on. No minutes?
No minutes, but I had a couple of things I'd like to bring up.
Yep, sure.
First of all is I received a message from SRPC regarding Communities for Healthy Aging Transitions Project. I'm wondering if the planning board might be interested in me sending that out and see about maybe getting involved in that possibly?
I, what was that?
It's Communities for Healthy Aging Transitions Project with SRPC. Would you like me to send that out for the board to review and possibly consider getting involved?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds great.
And the other thing is we need to come up with a plan on signing the milars.
Yeah.
And one more.
Yeah.
Sorry. So is, are the coals going to be required to get a variance for the wetland where the changes to the zoning ordinance is now active because they have been posted?
I had the question on that in general, so we can keep it. Just in general, I was, when do these proposed zoning ordinances actually take effect? And it's when, it's when we publish the first public hearing notice? Or is it after we vote that we're actually sending it to warrant?
My understanding was when it's published. Go ahead.
It's when it's published, but by law, it cannot prevent a building permit from being issued until it's been voted on by the town. Does that make sense?
Correct, but so what, it can't permit, it can't block a building permit from being issued. But they would, at what point in the application process would an applicant fall under those versions versus the current zoning?
They're, the, the current amendments are considered current the second that we post them.
Right.
So they fall under that.
If they, if they're, if they were posted before their application was received?
Correct.
Received or accepted?
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd rather just stop the conversation because I don't want to talk specifically about an applicant.
No, and I'm not trying to talk about, that's what I'm trying to say. I thought, oh, because we
It was, yeah, I know, but it was brought up in specific reason for an applicant, so.
The reason why I'm asking is because I have to process an application for a variance for them. And is it for a weapon and?
Well, let's, let's talk out of this meeting.
Let's talk.
Okay.
So there, there was a question just before this one.
Yeah, milars.
Milars. Did they have the milar there?
Yes, I have them already.
Okay.
Which one is this for?
Ada and Sarah.
I think we just need to confirm that, that if the, I didn't see anything in our site plan or subdivision regs that specifically we have, we say that seven signatures fields are needed, but it doesn't say that seven signatures are needed. So if it's not in our bylaws and it's not in there and if the registry of deeds doesn't require given the, you know, where we're at currently, I'd be fine with the, you know, the chair signing it. And we can always do it a case by case where we approve, you know, the signing by the chair for final approval on the, on the milar. If, you know, if that
Okay, I agree.
Feel better.
All right, I'll, I'll go in tomorrow, Steph, I mean, Joanna and, and sign the milar and we can let Mr. Barry know that that'll be signed.
Okay. I'll send you an email with my times that are available tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other items to discuss? Anybody want to bring something up?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Eaton and I don't know if this has come up with the, on those roads that were mentioned by the, the road agent. Where I think they had culvert failures, Cooper Hill being one of them. I was wondering if any of that's, if it's been looked at, that was exacerbated by the increase of use of that road, especially now it's been paved. You know, it used to be just a small dirt road and now I'm sure it's seeing a lot heavier traffic. So I don't know if, if replacement, it's going to be looked at to make sure that the new, new ones are.
Yeah, they're, Cooper Hill is the one, it's, it's not as bad as the one they're more worried about is Berry. But Cooper Hill, it's, it's sinkhole, so. It probably would have a lot more traffic on it, I would imagine, so.
The Berry Road one, I think, is right, we're going through a pretty, pretty extensive wetland.
Yeah, the Berry Road one is, like I said, they, they, they know before too long, the bridge is probably going to have to be repaired. And the culverts out there, they're 48 inch, so. Something that they're dealing with now, but in the long term, it's going to have to be something that's.
Yeah, those, those are deteriorating pretty, pretty quickly.
And it's going to be an expensive repair as well. Probably around $750 to $800,000 to do it properly. So they just maintain the best that they can as of now.
Yep, yep.
Is this, is this the crossing that's over towards what would be the Lee Line or is that?
Yeah, yeah, there's two culverts, two, well, one's a bridge and one's a culvert.
The one lane road right now?
Yep. It's, yeah, the edges are just sloughing off into the wetland area.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if everybody's had enough for tonight, then I'd entertain a motion for close the meeting.
So move.
All right, well, everybody have a good evening and thanks for joining.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, good night.